...with the Administration Department for the City of Marion. Thank you, Stephanie. Stephanie is our HR manager. Next, we have Lauren Gravosha for her 10 years of dedicated service to the Administration Department for the City of Marion. Lauren is our Assistant to the City Administrator. Next, if we could have Rashad Castaneda come forward for his 10 years of dedicated service to the Police Department. Rashad is a Sergeant in our Police Department. And last but very not least, if we could please have Ross Davis come forward for his 25 years of dedicated service. Ross is our Fleet Superintendent.
It is. I think this is our second or third time doing this. We want to introduce some of our new, all of our new employees to the governing body, and we'll do that in conjunction when we do our service of each quarter. So we want to introduce our fourth quarter newer employees. Both are in our Public Works Department. They're both here? Just Kyle. Okay. We have two. Ryan Fry couldn't make it with us tonight. He's one of our Public Works Maintenance Workers, but we do have Kyle Bruder. If you would please come forward and if you want to say a couple words to the City Council.
Thank you for bringing me on. It's a pleasure to work with you guys and look forward to being here for quite some time, so I'm sure we'll talk again.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, see, well, this is an excellent and exciting one. And as confirmed, the appointment of Tyson Boyer to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for the term expires December 31st, 2026 is in our packet, so if I get a chance to read about Tyson this time. And I've invited Tyson to come forward and say a couple of words to the Council to see if you all get a chance to. Please go forward. And for the record, would you give us your name and address?
Hello, my name is Tyson Boyer. I live at 6300 Mackey Street, Marion, Kansas, 66202. I'm a resident of Marion for going on 14 years now. I'm really excited to be active in the community and I appreciate this time tonight.
Thank you, Tyson. Okay, we appreciate you coming forward and hearing your comments. Yes, I would take a motion. Police, please hands.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the Council confirm the appointment of Tyson Boyer to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for the term expiring December 31st, 2026.
We have a motion. We have a second. Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
I second that.
Give him a minute. Motion second.
Councilmember Hands?
Aye.
Councilmember Callagall?
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy?
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder?
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers?
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich?
Aye.
Councilmember Shabeta?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
One more word. Tyson, thank you. We're going to have you for several more years. Okay, the last thing is I'd like to talk a little bit about what I know the council members have been doing over the last several weeks. I attended the Creative Arts Meeting where we discussed activities that would be occurring around the metro area during the 2026 FIFA World Cup soccer tournaments. Discussion of how we can work together regarding each other's community activities with the event was interesting and I'm sure we'll be getting more in the future and get a sort of view on who would be involved. So I will reach out. They'll reach out to me. So, thank you. I attended the Johnson County Wyandotte County Mayor's Holiday Festivities. It's always good to get to know an area with other mayors and then formally attend. Mr. Eagle and I attended the Library Board's Meeting where they agreed to sell the library property to us. Cooperative agreements where we can all come together, the better our constituents is always welcomed. That goes before the county commissioners put on this month. I and numerous city employees got the opportunity to volunteer at the Johnson County Christmas Bureau Holiday Event. This wonderful group serves the region each year by providing food, clothing, toys, and most of other gifts free of charge to a large part of our community. This organization functions year-round and is located right here in Marion, as you may know that. I attended the Marion Baptist Christmas Lunchroom. We got to see many of the retired police officers. It's good to see them still alive. And a great event to bring current and past officers together. Thank you, Chief, for allowing us to commute with those people. I look forward to that every year. I and fellow council members attended the Delaney Group Home Tour and Ribbon Cutting of Spire by the Northeast Chamber of Commerce. We welcome them to our community. I and numerous staff in the city and county met with Colonel Newwone, Newwoner? Woner? With the Corps of Engineers, I hope he's not listening or watching this later. But he is in charge now of the Corps of Engineers group that is going to be taking care of the Turkey Creek mitigation over there. And it's, we appreciate the opportunity that he came to actually look at the creek. There you are. And he lives, he lives in Marion. He lives very close to Charlotte. It's good to have him local. I and numerous city and county met with, oh my God, I attended the Northeast Johnson County Mayor's Lunchroom. I found that being mayor is very, very nice because it has a lot of perks. You can eat at a lot of different places. It's a, one of the things. The, I did bill-reading for Salvation Army. It's part of my service to the Johnson County Kiwanis Group. You know, I was overwhelmed by the generosity. I don't know if anybody drops money into those bills. All those people are volunteers that go out there and serve those, you know, at that time. It's sometimes very cold out there, but I saw tens and $20 bills being put in there. I started feeling kind of cheap because I didn't want to put a couple bucks in. But anyway, the generosity of our community is overwhelming. I attended the Johnson County, relax, this one. I attended the Johnson County Criminal Advisory Committee meeting via Zoom while I was in Florida. Yeah. Due to the major snorestorm, it was held remotely via Zoom, so I was pleasantly happy to attend that. And of course, I also told them where I was. It was 70 degrees. Well, you guys remember the storm up here. But it's good to have input on a county level with what's going on criminally in our county. Several council members in the Police Department Open House. It's always good to see our police officers interacting with the community on a positive note. And Chief and your officers were bringing that on. It's nice to do that on a positive note and just pull people in their tickets. And the very last thing I have, and I'm going to need some participation from the audience on this one, but it turns out that this very night is one of our council member, Jacob Leahy's birthday. And so I would like for us to sing Happy Birthday to Jacob. We'll call him Mr. Leahy, okay? Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Mr. Leahy. Happy birthday to you. All right, that concludes my bearing. Other things is the Planning Commission, I think, is coming up next. Consider approval or an ordinance amending Marion Code Section 4222. Member Dyer for the voting. I'm the Mayor. Councilmembers, Brian Dyer, Commune Director. Deceany, you have before you ordinance that... ...regards to accessory dwellings. This is something that stems from a conversation that you all had back in September 23rd of last year, where staff presented you information in regards to accessory dwellings and allowing them to enter single-family zoning districts. At that meeting, you all took in some information, made some recommendations and suggestions, and then directed or requested your Planning Commission draft an ordinance that would amend our code to allow for ADUs. On November 6th, Planning Commission heard staff's presentation had quite a bit of discussion in common about ADUs, and then directed staff to draft an ordinance, which the Planning Commission then had a public hearing on on December 4th. The draft ordinance that you have before you, Deceany, is a draft ordinance that they considered. Again, they reviewed and discussed the ordinance and had a public hearing. They had one comment, a public comment. Following the public hearing, Planning Commission announced we recommended approval of the ordinance. And again, as mentioned, the purpose of it is to allow ADUs in our single-family zoning districts. What is an accessory dwelling unit? Again, we covered most of this already, but accessory dwelling unit is a unit that is secondary to the principal unit of a single-family located on the same lot as a single-family. I'll screen some good examples of what ADUs look like. I think the upper right ones, if they're detached ADUs, what we traditionally think of when it comes to ADUs, but they also can be attached, such as in the upper left-hand corner where some of the example of where a new structure has been added to the existing single-family dwelling unit. Again, staff did some research and brought to you, discussed to you what we found and also what our local communities have been doing. So with all that information, again, drafting an ordinance that the Planning Commission recommended approval. Some of the highlights of that ordinance are before you this evening. Again, it's considering accessory use, so it's placed, recommended to be placed in Chapter 74, Article 8. That is the article on accessory structures. So this is appropriate place for it. It allows for attached and detached ADUs. The ADU must be on the same lot or parcels of the principal single-family dwelling unit. Property owner must occupy the principal or accessory dwelling unit. Again, this is one of the comments that was made by the City Council, some of the City Council members that they wish the Planning Commission considered. They did consider that item and determined that was appropriate to include it in this ordinance. New detached, detached ADUs must have separate utility connections. Again, that comes from our utility providers as well as the building code. An ADU and the principal structure cannot cause a lot to have 75% of the service covered. Again, trying to preserve single-family neighborhoods in regards to the feel of them. Green space is one of the main things that really we like about our single-family neighborhoods. So trying to put a cap on the amount of appropriate service to make sure that these lots have some level of green space. Also, it helps in regards to stormwater management. More rooftops, more pavement increases, you know, stormwater flow off of the lot, which goes into our municipal storm service system. The next item, existing driveways can provide ADU a parking space. That kind of goes with the previous item, and then again, trying to eliminate the amount of appropriate surface out there. Also, also want to not require an ADU to have its own dedicated parking space or driveway. Again, ADUs, kind of one of the ideas behind it is to give opportunities for affordable housing. And mandating or legislate requiring a new driveway and a parking space, maybe it just increases the cost of construction. And then finally, there's no additional restrictions on short-term. An ADU can be a short-term, it's all our S2R amendments. So then, that's what the ADUs. Then we throw in a, what I like to call a bonus amendment. This is an amendment to revising Section 74-424 and bulk regulations for accessory structures. Read through the original, what Colonel said is very difficult, complicated to understand. So staff, Planning Commission went through, made it easier to understand, and more clear, clear. We don't think it changed anything in regards to the intent of this amendment for that section. So those are the two things that were in the ordinance for Deceany. That, if you happen to answer any questions. Just clarification, I think I understood what you said in our S2R. If they wanted to be an S2R, they're going to have to make an application for the ADU. It needs to be a S2R, it's within a thousand feet, they couldn't do it. Correct. So it would be, yeah, it's the exact same requirement. So for an S2R, it would also have to go through our landlord licensing and inspection program and then apply for an S2R license. You have to have a short-term, you have to have both a landlord license and S2R license. So an ADU that wants to be an S2R would be subject to a thousand feet of. Thank you. Mr. Mayor. Are those the provisions for one and two bedroom? Was there any consideration for a studio? Yeah, and that was one of the topics that definitely at the Planning Commission had. It, that language comes from the International Property Maintenance Code. That language does not, it just requires those spaces be provided, not that they be as individual compartmentalized spaces. So to directly answer your question, yes, as we've written it, staff certainly thinks studio permits fit well within those, that apartment. Yes. Any other questions right there? Two more questions. I would entertain a motion, please. Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the City Council concur with the recommendation of the Planning Commission and approve an ordinance amending Marion Code Section 74-422 to allow accessory dwelling units and bulk regulations for accessory structures.
Motion for a second. Mr. Callagall?
I second that.
And a motion, second.
Councilmember Callagall?
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy?
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder?
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers?
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich?
Aye.
Councilmember Shabeta?
Aye.
Councilmember Hands?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Okay, thank you. Let's start from the board. Let's tell us where you can talk to us.
Good evening. Today, we're asking you to consider a resolution of intent to finance the acquisition of property with the issuance of debt. While I understand this is not something that we regularly do, we do want to reserve the right to issue debt for the purchase of property, particularly the property that will be, that you all approved for purchase back in December, the real estate contract for the former ADU library properties. The library then subsequently approved that property purchase. And then, as the Mayor mentioned earlier, that's going to go to the Board of County Commissioners, I believe, later this month for their approval to be ratified. And while we did mention that we do plan to pay cash for the purchase of this property, our bond counsel and our financial advisor have advised us that we should at least give ourselves the option to bond the purchase of this property for a number of reasons that are included in your packet. It does not obligate, this resolution does not obligate you to bond the purchase, but it does allow if the numbers come out right once we get to that point. And then it just provides us an additional finance option to reimburse ourselves bonding once we cash purchase the property here in just a few weeks. So I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have.
Questions from his board? Oh, yeah, go ahead, Mr. Silver.
But it is the city's preference to pay cash?
Yeah, that's right. Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions from his board? Seeing many questions, I would entertain a motion for that. Say it again.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the Council approve a resolution of intent to reimburse the city for the purchase of certain property through the future issuance of debt.
Do you have a motion? Do you have a second? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, your second?
And a motion, second.
Councilmember Leahy?
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder?
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers?
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich?
Aye.
Councilmember Shabeta?
Aye.
Councilmember Hands?
Aye.
Councilmember Callagall?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So next item up is consider approval of an agreement with BHC. We have calculated for you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The Carter Avenue, 67th to Carter Avenue project is our 2026 Carriage Project. And what that means is Carter Avenue is a Johnson County Carriage route, so it's eligible for up to 50% reimbursement of construction costs. The scope of work for this project includes a two-inch melon overlay, replacement of curb and gutter, and ADA ramps as necessary, stormwater improvements and pavement markings. A five-foot sidewalk will be installed on the east side of Carter Avenue up to 65th Street. Then it will cross over the road and be installed on the west side of Carter Avenue and tie into the trail for Chatelane Park. We've been working with the aristocrat, with their building. We wanted to make sure the sidewalk would fit in, so we've been coordinating with them, trying to limit any kind of regrading. And we've also been working with BNSF, as it takes a while to get permission to install the sidewalk across the tracks. BHC is our on-call engineering firm, and they've submitted a scope of work in the amount of $199,985. And design is anticipated to be completed by the end of this year with construction in 2026. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions, we heard, come here. My question. Just move back to it. I would entertain a motion. Very nice, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I, excuse me, sorry. I move that the Council approve an agreement with BHC for design services for the Carter Avenue, 67th Street to Carter Avenue Street Improvements Project in the amount of $199,985.
A second?
I'll second that.
And a motion, second.
Councilmember Ryder?
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers?
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich?
Aye.
Councilmember Shabeta?
Aye.
Councilmember Hands?
Aye.
Councilmember Callagall?
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you, Clerk. Looks like the next item up will be the January CFP update. We have, are you already there?
Yes. The January CFP update is in your packet, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. One thing I did want to point out is the 75th Street Bridge Repair Project. The kickoff meeting was scheduled for January 6th, and it snowed a lot that day, and then it... Well, the project manager was plowing snow. So then it was rescheduled again, and he had to plow, so it's rescheduled for this Friday. So next month, I'll have a much more update on the project.
Any questions? Go. Would you have one more? Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
And so I'm assuming that there's some issue around the Gabion Basket repair thing too, because there's also a reference to January 6th on there.
Well, yeah, they were getting ready to, so they poured the, the foundation for retaining it all, and they were getting ready to put in the blocks on the six. It snowed, and then they were going to come in this week, but they piled all the snow right in front of our area. So I don't know what the snow is.
We don't really date.
So, yeah, I don't know what we're going to do about that. I don't know how soon the snow's going to melt.
Thanks.
Mr. Silver, two person.
They went broad ass, based on the undergrounding of the utilities and transmission pathway under, I want to say I feel like, doesn't it seem?
EB Avenue?
EB, thank you.
Yes.
It was contingent on nice weather. Do you know how many days that has been delayed? If at all.
The road closed?
Yeah.
It's supposed to be open, they said three or four days, so I'm going to say the end of this week, but.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Any question for my comment? The first question was, I saw some crews out clearing up some additional snow on the shoulders today. Was that Mark Cruz or was that State?
On Charlotte Parkway?
No, on 935.
Yeah.
Well, I did also want to thank all the breaks for all the great work we've done with. I drive down Switzer regularly, and it's very clear which of our communities values snow removal and which teams put together all of our work.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
I would add to that. I live on the Overland Park Quarter, and so I can definitely tell. And thank you very much for all the work last week.
Thank you. I'll pass it on to the crews.
I'll rub it into the other mayors when I see it.
I did love seeing the TikToks that came up on my, my pointy of all of the snow removal comparisons. And Marion did make it. So I was, yeah, I sent Kayla and Chris links.
And would you tell us the name of our new plant hall?
Oh, Cleopatra. That's kind of a mouthful.
Yeah, it was pretty, pretty, pretty cute. That's true. Any other questions?
Okay, thank you.
All right. Looks like we have the monthly finance report. Here we go.
All right, this is the last time that you're going to hear from me doing the finance report now that we have Megan on board.
On board.
Welcome, Megan. She started on Wednesday. This is actually going to be your November finance report from last year, since we didn't have a second meeting in December. But I did want to point out a few things. Our revenues, they continue to rocket per usual. Shout out to the MCC. They've done a great job. They did a great job in 2024, and I know are going to continue to do a great job, but their revenues are coming in strong. Our transient guest tax seems to really have rebounded from COVID. I know we struggled there for a little bit, but it seems pretty consistently now that we're back to normal levels. And then just a reminder for everybody, now that it is 2025, so moving on from our report, now that it is 2025, our property taxes are going to reset essentially from our 2024 error, and we're back to the 2025 levels that we talked about within the last budget year. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Card? Oh, all right. Thank you. Did a fine job on that. And you're there obviously for the next one, which is going to be a single hall or update.
Here I am. Hopefully, we don't have too many more of these, but this is the same timeline that you've seen all along. The last update that I gave, we had not gone out to bid yet, but we officially have as of January 6th, I believe, that our RFP is out to bid. Our mandatory pre-bid meeting is scheduled for January 31st. We've gotten a number of questions from Hallers already, so people are looking at it. That's great. But they'll be required to attend that pre-bid meeting on the 31st, and then bids are due back on February 14th to then, which we will review and consider those, and then bring back for you guys a consideration for a contract. I'd be happy to answer questions.
Is, is staff going to review the, the bids first, or is the, we're looking to...
It'll be a staff group first, and then just to make sure there's not any nuances or anything crazy like that. Can't imagine that there are, but then we'll take it to the work group for consideration. We haven't gotten that being scheduled yet, but we'll certainly do that before we bring that up for you.
It's not new. I trust you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Card?
Thank you all.
Thank you. Single hall or update? Looks like we've got the chief coming forward. Oh, no, stupid. Thank you, Chief. You did a fine job on that. You get to talk about VR training demonstrations.
Yeah, we're going to take the opportunity to demonstrate the VR training system. I know when I brought this to council last year for approval for purchase. I got a lot of queries about what it is and how we're going to use it. So we thought it'd be a good opportunity to bring it before council, kind of give you a little demonstration of what it is, what our officers are going to be looked at. We bought this system for two reasons. One, we wanted to give our officers more opportunity at realistic training, as realistic as you can make training. We've used systems similar to this and called a back system. It's very cumbersome and is, you have to go to bid, whereas this allows us to bring the training to us and set it up anywhere. The other reason we got it is, and we actually used it for that purpose on our open house this weekend, it's actually something we can use to help teach the public about what we do and how we do it, and give the public an actual opportunity to kind of look at some of the situations that we have to train for. So it's got a twofold purpose in that. So we're going to give a quick demonstration about a scenario, kind of briefly. It'll show up here on the screen as what the officer sees. And we'll have the major kind of give a brief description of how we're going to do the training. Afterwards, after the meeting is over, if we're going to need it hooked up, if anybody wants to come down and kind of take a look at it and maybe put the goggles on, we'll allow that. So, any questions?
Any questions?
Basically, what you see up on the screen, that's what the instructor sees on their computer. So the, the scenario is run by an instructor from the computer. The instructor can actually talk to the officer that's going through the scenario. The officer could wear headset. He's not going to have it on right now, but, right? So, and the comments that the instructor and the officer were being, the role-play comments, like would come from the bad guy or the person that they're contacting. So it makes it more realistic in that aspect.
When you got, what you guys are saying up here when the scenario comes up is not, when you're in, when you got the VR on, it's a completely different world. Because you're immersed into it, so it's, I definitely encourage you to come and try on one, just kind of do it.
Can you put it on the screen when he sees it?
Yes, sir, once I get into the scenario, probably, so.
The other good thing about this program is, and see, we brought the rifle over because it's usually easier for people to handle. Um, but we have a handgun, we also have a taser and a flashlight, um, that are synced with the system. So they can use any one of those tools depending on what the scenario is. So we're not just using one single tool, we're giving officers choices about stuff they have to engage with, just like in real life, to make the training more realistic.
Hey, hey, put the gun down, put the gun down, put the gun down. Put your hands up.
See, now she's directing what the bad guy's going to do. So it's like, she's going to tell the bad guy to put his hands in the air, the bad guy's going to put his hands in the air so the officer can do it for us accordingly.
Go down to the ground, look at our knees.
This is not what the officer sees on the screen.
Go all the way down. Do not move, you understand? And I, we got a perimeter set kind of short, so I can see the line on the ground right here, so I'm not going to step any further. But in a bigger room, we could go around and, and do handcuffing and everything else.
You can also sync several of these, so we had two or three officers that were wanting to jump into a scenario and I can share, I can put three, four, five, however many headsets we have, I can put that on the officer's head.
What would the officer see on the screen?
Make all these other people leave that are around me.
We're also being used to, um, the buttons, so it takes a little bit of time to do. I think for some security, I would, uh, I don't know why they can do that. I put Chris, this is what Chris is seeing right now. It may be behind you.
Yeah, girl.
Yep, the radio right there.
So these, see the camera? The camera, the camera's been working the exact same as our, like, oh, it's just got a different level on it. So of course you point it there.
Yeah, I'm going to point it, but don't get scared, guys.
It actually has weight recoil, just like our regular weapons, uh, it's just the same, so.
Oh, that's pretty good.
So again, it's being as real as you can be as real without actually having to do any of the real stuff. Um, we think this is going to be great and again, one of the other reasons why I was so intrigued by doing this, um, if you guys haven't realized, and all the new officers that you saw are departments young or we've hired a very young generation of officers, what did they grow up doing in their lives? Play video games. Best way to train someone is to train them in the, in how they understand the world, they understand the world through video. So we think this is going to be a great investment. We've just started, uh, learning how to use it, we're going to start training with it this year. We hope we're going to be able to get it out in the public war. Obviously, we're going to incorporate this into our citizens academy, let our students go through that. Um, so hopefully we're going to be able to see a lot more of this and we're going to be able to get a lot of useful, so. Any questions?
I'm just curious how many headsets we have.
Right now we have one, but that doesn't mean, uh, as we get into this and we figure out exactly how well we're going to be able to use this, I won't be coming back to answer any questions.
Anyway, um, so can you set up scenarios that play out in real time? Are you manually selecting each action that goes through?
The answer, the short answer is yes, uh, so there are pre-fabricated scenarios that are laid out in here. Um, the benefits of this versus some of the other systems is that they do have preset responses. This is completely limited, so I have some check boxes, which you can see is a little bit modified right now, it's like right now.
Yeah.
I can also customize private, like, set together. He can't hear anything, can't see anything except the scenario and what I'm saying to him to get an actual response.
Right, that's always the, like, real-time reactions.
Scenario, I actually, if I have the time, I can do it.
Okay.
We'll, we'll build some scenarios.
I can hear what she was saying through that.
Because you don't have the headset on.
I can still hear her talking.
Oh, okay, cool.
So I, they, we have earmuffs to put on and block out the rest of the world.
And does the scenario adjust based on the actions of the police officer?
You can make it do whatever you want to.
Yeah, that's why, that's why we have a, an instructor there, so that if the officer does everything right, then the, the guy, the bad guy or whatever in the scenario will do exactly what you're supposed to do. The goal is not to make every scenario shoot scenario. We don't train our officers every time we go into a scenario or a situation where it could be used in a force, if they're automatically trained in a force, that would be stupid. Um, and we don't train that way. So we, we make sure that when we do trainings where it's use of force trainings, uh, we train deadly force situations. But we also train the majority of it is de-escalation and how to get people to do what you want to do and get them positive results or doing what you want to do.
But then the system seems to allow that more, that, uh, more breathing in.
Yeah, the old fat system was, there, you couldn't modify it. It, they, it was pre-programmed and it ran a scenario and all scenarios were the same. No mayor's went through one time or fifty times, it sort of kind of stayed what, and if you did everything right, like. So, um, this gives us flexibility, so officer A can go through, we can set up A scenario and their outcomes will be different than officer B because of how the officer reacts to the situation.
And one of the biggest training benefits is that we, they're actually recorded. So when we're on the scenario, I can save it if I need to, because we've been through that, uh, it's probably going to be later. I could also take, if chief is doing the scenario, I can take chief, leave him in the scenario, let Megan go and run it to himself and he can watch that unfold, exactly how it did in real time, so that kind of type of toys will be.
Good, Mr. Silver. So I went to the open house on Saturday and, um, I told the chief how incredible this system was. This is the first time I was ever fully immersed in a virtual world, um, and it just blew my mind. But what was really apparent was how important the training tool is. So I look forward to, when we go forward to us, the additional VR sets. Um, because I, I think it'd be invaluable to our department to have one of those.
What's the time commitment like to set everything up and get people trained on how to, like, use the system and, um, set up scenarios and all that kind of stuff? And do we have someone dedicated to that? Is there?
We have a group of officers or training officers, they're the ones going to be running the system, so we ran, how many officers, sergeants?
We ran like five or so with the training on how to set it up and everything.
Uh, they, they came in here today, set this up, it took them about an hour-ish to, because you got to set, it's not just you set it up at the computer and you go.
Calibrate it.
You've got to calibrate it and it's got to figure out what the route, the room is that it's in and all that good stuff. So it takes about an hour, uh, to set that up. The good thing is, is we set it up over at the station and remembers it, so it stays there. Uh, you know, uh, for the officers to use it, it ain't going to take anything trained in because they're doing it at home already with their own VR system, so. Um, our turnaround time on most sets is going to be pretty good. Me, on the other hand? I'm old.
You'll still learn, I have taken.
So is there an intent to have like quarterly training for the officers to run through this or?
Great thing, the great thing about, uh, the way we do things in, in our department is our ten-hour shifts. Um, our officers train every Wednesday, ten hours a day. Um, so half the, everybody works on the police department works on Wednesday. Half the team works Monday, you know, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, the other half works Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. So every other Wednesday is your training day, so two Wednesdays a month, the entire department's trained. It gives us so much flexibility about when to schedule trainings. And again, I've always, every time you've heard me talk about training, I tell you how important this training is to build confident, uh, effective officers. If you're not worried about what to do because you have training, you don't tend to make a lot of mistakes. Okay, man, we're going to make mistakes, but we don't make a lot of mistakes. That's why training for me is very important. So people scheduled us into the training program. Uh, our trainings are already pre-built out. We built the training out for four or five months in advance. You'll see us start really heavily probably getting into this, uh, the last half of this year. We're, we're still just on training with it, but the last half of the year is when we really start scheduling it. How many times it gets used, it all depends on what's in the calendar. We are going to do, we do a lot of training.
I'm very close to the first, especially if it's a, like, interesting, like, hours. So half, half the program, because this is the first time I'm going to call.
Any other questions, Chief?
I just, I was going, I totally support what we're doing, it is the right thing for now. I'm just concerned with all of this very realistic training of the mental health of our officers. You need to be very aware of that because.
We get training on that too.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
We actually do, we just kind of wellness training, I split it.
You know, I did that citizens academy thing, we did the simulator, whatever, and I learned that I don't have what it takes to be a police officer.
You're right.
Well, you're right, yeah.
We, we addressed it, that's why we do wellness training and all, all kinds of other things, so yeah, that's a good point.
I play a game where I just like get zombies at home and I need to decompress after I play it for like twenty minutes. Yeah, so it's very, it is very immersive, it's very overwhelming for your senses, so that is a great question.
Any other questions? Well, thank you for bringing this in this evening.
Probably like I said, I do meetings.
You guys done this?
I want to play with it.
Sure, I'm sure someone's will take advantage of that. All right, so, um, next item up is informational items and then we have a PC minutes, uh, for December third. If somebody have a question concerning that, thank you, Mr.? Nothing? I assume we have no executive session this evening?
No executive session.
Gosh. My last item is adjourned.
I just have a couple of things before your turn, that's okay?
Yes, please, I, so I'm just, go ahead.
Um, I, I know we said it a number of times tonight, but I just want to formally thank the public workers for all the work that they've done over the past few, really, week or so. Um, I know the, um, number of hours and, uh, just the amount of work they've done over the past week, because it wasn't your admin report last week, but, um, please give the crews a major shout out. Um, that was a lot of work and a lot of, a lot, a lot of overtime for them. Um, and then just a reminder that administrative offices will be closed on January twentieth for MLK Day. That's all I've got, I may have to answer any questions.
Any questions, Ms. Card? Five questions? Are we ready? Now, over adjourned.
Mr. Mayor?
This ends, go ahead.
I move we adjourn.
Okay, motion, number adjourned, committee change?
Mr. Mayor's second.
And put your motion in a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.
Way to start out the new year, the new year, man.
Howdy. I thought you might have been related.
Well, as I was at the H O. And then I forgot, I'm not, so I thought, well, today I remember.
There was a board meeting before the, everyone?
No, the next night.
Oh, damn, I forgot about that.
Yeah, because, um, we met in.
Guardian jet.
Jet, thank you. Um, and we all said, well, my, my building is next door, we just thought.
Yeah, give me a call if I could.
Oh.
Yeah, I totally forgot about it, so. I think because I had the big one on my calendar, the other one I didn't.
Hey, put your hands out. Where you been to?
Been to a lot of them.
Three hundred all seen it.
Nice to see you.
Nice to see you.
That's going to make a difference. That's, that's, you don't see the gun on your hand? Like, you know, you see it in. Take off. Oh, yeah, is it all? Now you have the gun. Uh, put it, put it in your lap, it's just going to look funny when you're holding it. Just work on how you work on the chair. Or you actually. Get a point toward the target. You see the targets out there? Point at the target. Well, you, if people were for a while, the matter, the batter last. You know, I've only worn, I've only, only done this one time. And I, I, the steps I've had, when I was eight. Actually, for a while.
We'll be to film that.
If only, if only shoveling snow was as easy.
What?
If only flowing snow is as easy as that, right? They need to be our training for public works, you know? That'll be next.
Yeah, we'll recruit. It's not a gas. I'm quite free gas. Oh, it's him, oh, there. Oh, over there.
Yeah, I think he hit the floor once or twice.
Oh, yeah, come on, I wouldn't bet. It's completely different than when. So you can turn all the way around, you can see the.
I mean, at, at some point, we'll.
Now, if you get immersed into a scenario, then you're obviously, it looks like. You can move around a lot, just for demonstration. Hold on to the gun.
I know, well, we're about to go on audit, and, and, yes.
You can set up scenarios, you can put a portion pre-programmed. So you can have it comply with all stuff.
We need to check. Yes, yes, send it to me, yeah. All, all the shit. No, that's right. No, I mean, it's, it's like.
Yeah.
Let me check. You have something to do, I'm like, this is great, because right now we have a picture from the apartment, and I'm like, that's great. That's awesome, I'm here to help, so, yeah.